It's very nice to meet you.
Good evening and welcome to the July 6, 2022, regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I've been receiving a lot of kind of shocked expressions from people today. And so I thought I'd at least explain for the folks that are here that don't know, and the folks on camera, I had a home improvement mishap over the weekend. But thanks to the great folks at Holland Hospital, they got me patched up and home back in about an hour or so. I'm fine. It looks much worse than it is. But thank you for everyone for all of the concern that I've received over the day. And now we can move on and think about something else. And I will try to have the happy side of my face moving forward today rather than the angry side of my face. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Raymond. Peters. Corbin.
Here.
Coronado. Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a court.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. We're going to begin this evening, as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by our city manager Keith Van Beek, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you are so inclined.
Thank you, and again, if you're so inclined, please join me in prayer. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the blessings of summer. I'm to enjoy our friends and to enjoy our friends and fam- enjoy our friends and fam- enjoy our friends and family, to reflect on our nation and the freedoms that we are able to enjoy in it, including that we're able to gather as a municipality to consider the good of our citizens. We ask for wisdom this evening for our decision makers. As they make decisions on behalf of our citizens, we pray for safety for our citizens, especially as over the last several days, we're reminded again of instances of violence. We pray also for protection for our workers, whether that be city, county, our friends in townships and neighboring villages. We pray for protection for those that serve us overseas. But again, we pray for wisdom this evening. Thank you for the works that you put before us. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and have been previously reviewed by city council as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
For A, absences excused. For B, approval of minutes, June 15, regular meeting, and June 2020, June 22, 2022, study session. For C, Osev Office. For D, Planning Commission, proposed unified development ordinance text amendments, final adoption, July 20, 2022. For E, Planning Commission, approved city non-motorized transportation plan. For F, city clerk, claims filed against the city. For G, city clerk, charitable gaming license, adopt resolution. For H, transportation services, traffic change, no parking change on Quarterline Road. For I, transportation services, approve additional consulting services proposal for the Sixth Street reconstruction project. For J, community neighborhood services, text amendment to Chapter 6, final adoption, July 20, 2022. For K, community neighborhood services, text amendment to Chapter 19-12, final adoption, July 20, 2022. For L, finance, purchasing, declare fire division items as surplus. For M, finance, purchasing, declare police items as surplus. For N, finance, purchasing, parks and recreation, award tulip- award bid for tulip bulbs. For O, finance, purchasing, turnout gear for fire services. For P, finance, May financial report. For Q, management administrative services, boards, commissions, and committees, dissolution of the CATV Advisory Commission, final adoption, July 20, 2022. For R, management administrative services, International Festival of Holland, Approval of Agreements. For S, management and administrative services, fiscal year 2022 strategic and business plan, final report. For T, management and administrative services, downtown group, appointment of new PSD board member. For U, management and administrative services, revocable license agreement, awning, 12 West 8th Street. For V, management and administrative services, revocable license agreement, light fixture, fixture, 240 South River. For X, management and administrative services, agreement with Lumiere LLC for geotechnical and environmental window on the waterfront. For Y, management administrative services, annual department report.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the audience who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. Yes, Mr. Corbin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have item 4E removed and placed on the agenda.
4E, that's Planning Commission, the- and it would be placed at 12B2, report to approve the city non-motorized transportation plan. All right, any others that need to be taken off? Seeing none. What is the council's pleasure in regard to the consent agenda? Mr. Byrd, do you have a motion?
Yes, move we approve.
By Byrd, move to approve as amended by Mr. Corbin? Is that what the motion is?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Byrd. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address council. As we do in all of our meetings, under the Open Meetings Act, we provide the opportunity for any member of the public to speak to council on any item that they wish to speak to. Please note that this is one-way communication. This is an opportunity for you to speak to us. We don't answer questions during this time. We don't engage in discussion at this time. And we do hold to a five-minute limit per speaker. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a yellow light, a red light, and a green light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that, and so we thank you for adhering to that as well. When you approach the podium, please state your name and the municipality in which you live, the community in which you live. It's important for us to know whether you are a City of Holland resident or not. Having said that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality?
Ann Hunrickson, Zeeland. And Mayor Box, I'm sorry. You'll get through it. Last month was Pride Month, and so I'm here to give a report in some of the activities that I participated in and why. June used to mean the beginning of summer and all the activities that families and friends could enjoy together. Holland has always been a safe place for downtown activities, parks with free concerts and celebration. It is also a time for tourism and economic growth for our visitors. Of course, there are weddings and graduations. We now have a whole month, June, to celebrate LGBT by Mayor Box Declaration, Pride Month. And it's interesting, that same night that that was given Mayor Box, we talked about one or two days for June 15th, and then one to honor, I don't know whether it was a month, the female veterans of our country. So this is a month, and I know it's a national month proclaimed from Washington, DC. So many municipalities line up to attend. I did attend the LGBT events, and I checked my attitude and my spirit as to why I would get involved. It was to observe, to understand, and see if discrimination exists in Holland. The original premise that the LGBT cannot get housing and employment, thus a need for an anti-discrimination ordinance. The first thing I attended was the Poetry at Herrick, and I don't know if- I don't think I saw any of you there. It was on a Wednesday night in Newark Council. So I had been to Pea Flag years ago. David Hookstra had attended also. We heard an interesting presentation of a man advocating for transgender expression as a woman. So I did not feel out of place. I wanted to hear and see how the LGBT plus community thinks and affirms one another. They were very confident to speak their thoughts because they were in good company. Many came with a deliberate anger stance of not liking anyone who did not agree with their orientation decision. Christianity and God were brought up defensively with almost a plea that God loves them no matter what Christians think. And the truth is, he does. Others expressed their love story and others their sexual freedom being out of the closet. It was their night to shine and enjoy like-mindedness. The program was artfully done and inclusive. Holland, Zeeland, Spectrum Hospitals, therapy, Frances Fay Clothing, State Farm, Gentex, churches, et cetera, were represented in the booklet, plus the winning poems. Like any other 501(c)(3), their ads were solicited to be recognized. After the program, there was a time for mingling. I enjoyed talking to Jeff Sorensen, OOTL Director from Grand Rapids. He was excited to tell me that he was leaving OOTL for a better opportunity. I thanked him for the respectful integrity that he represented the LGBT community here in Holland. I'm sorry to see him go. The other event I went to was the Centennial Festival at the end of June. I was not comfortable here because this was not just people, families enjoying a festival. Rather, it was a demonstration of sexual orientation expression. Women and men dressed in ways that were sexual. Young women in bras and panties, men in tight and revealing attire. I wasn't sure I wanted to stay, even though there were only a few of these. I'm not sure it supported pride. Families were there with children in strollers and wagons. It was sexual. Remember, your DEI ordinance defines sexual orientation as shall mean emotional, romantic, or sexual attraction or the absent thereof to people. Sexual orientation also refers to a person's identity based on those attractions and related behaviors and memberships of others to share those attractions. Food and music, but this stepped on the borderline of solicitation. There were children there, and like you see, I don't have a whole lot of time. The most disturbing-
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes. I'm sorry, your time has expired. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward, sir. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Blaine Verhaegh, and I live in the City of Holland at 577 Brownstone Street in the Cobblestone Development, which is just north of Grass Cup, off from Grass Cup Road. In the summer of 2021, so about a year ago, developer approached some of the Cobblestone Board members with the proposal of extending Greystone Road, which is a road within our community, into Fillmore Township for a new development. Members of the Cobblestone Board expressed their objection, opposition to the plan, and the developer said he would back off his proposal and be a good neighbor. We go ahead almost a year to May 4th of this year, and council approved the extension of Greystone Road to a new Fillmore Township development, also known as Cobblestone Fields. Two weeks following, council approved an easement through private property for a second emergency access point into the Cobblestone neighborhood to support the addition of the units that would be built in this new neighborhood. June 6, Holland Engineering was observed for the extension of Greystone Road into Fillmore Township for a new nine condo development. June 20th, Cobblestone Board members were informed of plans for a new development by the Board Member Ryan De Vries. Cobblestone is a unique 20-year-old development with over 100 individual residents, all with front porches and rear-load garages with sidewalks and retro street lighting posts, all of which the developer of Cobblestone Fields has indicated will not be present in the new development. Per council's previous approvals, I want to express my disappointment in the city by not notifying the Cobblestone residents, residents, owners of the approval to make this happen for the developer. When contacting Holland City, they said they had no obligation to notify Holland City residences, owners, because the development was taking place in Fillmore Township. When contacting Fillmore Township, they said they had no obligation to contact the Holland Cobblestone owners because the development was in Fillmore Township. Perhaps a rule change to avoid future instances should be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. Between the two of us, we have 75 years of law practice. Mr. Mayor, you have pre-read my comments. I have three points. I want to thank you for the fantastic job you did on the Tulip Time Parade this year.
I don't want to interrupt you, but we do need your name and your municipality for the record.
Oh, John Stewart, Plymouth Township.
Great, thank you.
Taxpayer at 33 East 13th Street since 1916. The Vanderbin family. My mother was the youngest of 12. My sister maintains the home and pays the taxes there. My three points are, one, thank you for the fantastic job on the Tulip Time Parade. We walked in it. I am inviting you to Plymouth Township. I think we can learn a lot of things. Plymouth Township, in the city of Plymouth, we had a parade this past Monday morning that I walked in. It was about 1/30th the size of Tulip Time. As a former staffer of the Michigan Municipal League of Two Years, you run a model city, and I've told your city manager that. My number one issue, though, is economic development. My wife of 43 years is here with my friend, Tom Parker, retired Holland public school teacher. I'm currently an elected trustee in my sixth year as trustee in Plymouth Township, and I also put in six years as a state representative. And in the last 42 years, I am the only one endorsed by Governor William Millican, our longest-serving governor of 14 years. As I indicated, my mother was the youngest of 12 Vanderbins. I have spent over two years of my life in Holland, Michigan, because we would come to the family home. We are a very private, family, well-educated, and I would like to say enlightened. I have made a living at the foot of Woodward and Jefferson across the street from the Detroit Welcome Sign. We all know, as a practicing attorney. My sister was widowed two weeks after the Tulip Time Parade. Her husband of 55 years passed away from advanced Parkinson's and COVID in the hospital in Beaumont in southeast Michigan. This article that I left with you was edited and proofread by Gwen Awurda and published in the Plymouth Today magazine, which was distributed to over 45,000 homes free in Plymouth and Plymouth Township, praising Holland, Michigan, and our city government here. I hope you will take time to read it. It was a walk for education. Mr. Mayor, I am the only attorney in the family. There are two medical doctors and there are two Presbyterian ministers, including my wife's father, who is a Princeton graduate with an earned PhD in history from the University of Michigan. We were designated as Holland Heritage with seven teachers in the original 12 Vanderbin family, taught 40 years each. With the Oxford shootings and the pandemic, I thought it was time to honor our teachers and the Vanderbin family. As I told you, I am a very- from a very private family. Education in Michigan is now a mosaic, public, private charter, and homeschool. I came here tonight to thank you for Tulip Time Parade on May 14, when 43 people drove from Plymouth and several friends of mine from Grand Rapids and walked the five miles. First responders were outstanding, absolutely incredible. Homeland Security, Holland City Police, Ottawa County sheriffs at every corner for safety during the parade. I observed police on top of buildings, two state police helicopters overhead as we walked the parade without incident. My longtime friend, 42- 48-year cop and chief of police in Dearborn, Ron Hadad, came over and walked the parade with me. Kim Vandermullen and Gwen Awurda, Tulip Time Office, did a very professional and first-class job. I can't say enough good things about them. Thank you again for the privilege to organize my Walk for Education. 43 people who drove to Holland, spent their money and time. I went out and spent $250 at De Boer's because I had to feed everybody at the Holland House on 13th Street.
Mr. Mayor, that is five minutes.
I hope we have-
I'm sorry, sir, your time has expired.
Okay, I do one final sentence.
I apologize. We're very strict about that. We don't allow any additional time, even if they're praising us, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Counselor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda is written petitions and communications. In addition to providing opportunity for public comment at our meetings for individuals who wish to come in, some folks are not able to join us in person, and we have created an email address specifically for people to be able to provide communication directly to city council, and that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We collect those in between our regular meetings. Council reads them, and then we accept them into the record here at our meetings, although we do not read them out loud at the meetings. We do not have any this evening, is my understanding. And so we will continue on to our next agenda item, item number 10, Adoption of Ordnances, updated ordinance, Section 18-50. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, before you this evening, before I hand it off to City Attorney Duckworth, is a relatively simple amendment to the Holland City Code, Section 18-50, responding to a recommendation from the Holland Department of Public Safety as it relates to parking violation notices and tickets. And I think it's self-explanatory with the red line example. So Vince can either add anything else or is able to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to comment or?
If you have anything that you would like to add at this point, otherwise we can give council members the opportunity to ask questions if they'd like to.
Yeah, it's straightforward. State law changed requiring six unpaid parking tickets before immobilization. Our ordinance was three, which was consistent with prior state law. So we're just trying to make sure the ordinance matches existing state law.
Okay. Any questions from council members?
No, that was my question. Thank you for anticipating.
Proactive city attorney, I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from council members? What is the pleasure of council in regard to the recommendation?
I move that we approve the updated ordinance, Section 18-52.
Moved by Arnshorst. Any support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Discussion? Seeing none? Yes, Mr. Duckworth.
Yeah, the ordinance is 18-5-0. I know some of the earlier printed materials said 18-52.
We made a correction, so good catch.
Yeah, online and-
Just make sure it's 5-0.
18-50 should be the-
Yeah, would you like to amend the original motion? Or should we have a motion to amend- a motion to amend the original motion? Mr. Corbin, would you like to make that motion? Oh, you got to turn your microphone on first there.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, update the ordinance, Section 18-50, not 18-52.
Okay, move by Corbin to amend the motion. Is there support on the amendment to the motion?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll in regard to the amendment to the motion?
Corbin.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Byrd. Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. We now have an amended motion on the floor, and that is a motion to approve the attached recommendation to City, Holland City Code, Section 18-50. Any discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll on the amended motion?
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the item that came off of the consent agenda. That would be item 12B2, Planning Commission, the non-motorized transportation plan. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You all, because I missed this meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I know the Planning Commission members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Raymond. You've heard about this a couple of times now, and I know that there was a thorough presentation to you all in the study session on this non-motorized transportation plan. I know that we have staff in the audience that can highlight anything that's in that. I suspect, though, because I had an earlier conversation, I don't think that we need to do a presentation anymore, but I think Councilmember Corbin just wanted to highlight something in that report. But please correct me if I'm wrong, and then we definitely can answer any questions on what we think is not only a very well-done plan, but something that is very much worthy of the investment that you all allowed us to make that we can recognize the importance of this non-motorized transportation in our community.
Based on Mr. Van Beek's comments, Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Your Honor. So very well-constructed. I just want to say it covers many issues that we face across the city when it comes to non-motorized access to the areas. The one area I was concerned, and I mentioned this during the study session, was the Fifth Ward, the South- was the fifth ward, the south end of the city, and getting access to Kingsington Parkway, some of those subdivisions out there that are starting to develop. And we now have a new water agreement with Fillmore Township. And so that accessibility isn't quite there. And I know that we're talking about that in the future. And today was a meeting with MAC, and MAC was talking about transportation access through the MAC. And we had the director of MDOT with us. And from there, we shared those concerns that money should be also more available for, or ready for these type of conversions and additions to our non-motorized plans. So I just wanted to have some assurances from staff that we addressed it well enough in the plan that if we went for grant opportunities, we could reference this document and use it as a tool to show or display that we have a real true need going into the future. So that's just one of, I got some reassurance from staff. And I just wanted to make sure that the public, as well as my colleagues on the board, knew that they felt very confident that it would be adequate for an application for grant purposes in the future. But we were highlighting all the non-motorized issues throughout the city, so not just a handful of places. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Corbin. Any other comments from council members? Actually, before we do that, we probably ought to get a motion on the floor. What is the council's pleasure in regard to the non-motorized transportation plan?
Motion of support.
Got a motion to approve the city non-motorized transportation plan by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion?
No, but I like the, to go along with Councilman Corbin's discussion. I do appreciate having the priority levels listed. I think that's very important. And I was happy to see that Van Ralty and Tenth and Eleventh Street intersection is right up there. Not quite three stars, but almost. And I think that'll be done in the next year or so with the-
Next year, yep.
-ongoing construction. So I just want to indicate my interest in that and concern myself. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council members? I just want to thank staff and Planning Commission for putting this together, as was said in the study session and at the Planning Commission level. But I think it needs saying here as well, on time and on budget, that this plan came through, which I think is an important thing to stress to the taxpayers. And I think a really important thing that we stress to them, we do plan, plan, plan in this city. And that's one of the things that we heard from MDOT today, is that they appreciate working with entities that do that planning, that have master plans, that have plans like this for specific areas. And for us to have planning in regard to non-motorized transportation shows exactly how high a priority that is for us here at the city level. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item twelve E four point one, Fire Station Bonds, Notice of Intent Resolution. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. An important step in a process of something that you have prioritized for us, and we're happy that you did, because we definitely want to make sure that we have the facilities that, most importantly, serve our community, but also are worthy of our firefighters that are providing services. So as you talked about, I know in study session a couple of weeks ago, Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken walked you through the plan for the construction of the new station at Waverly and the renovation of the existing station at Collin Park. And then Finance Director McCammon talked through one time already about the process, this being the first step in that process of making a notice to the community that we have an intent to bond up to eighteen million dollars to support those two projects. So that's what's before you tonight. I think it's important to make sure that the community is aware of this process, not only the projects that we're doing, but also of our intent that would eventually result in us going out to market to secure this, these funds. Lynn, Matt, I know you're just itching to add anything else, but I think we'll probably just say, are there any other questions from council? And then I'd probably have them take those direct questions from any of you.
Questions from council members? Dave?
Just to be clear, this is no guarantee that the city will indeed borrow this amount, or any of it, actually. It just basically sets a cap for how much we intend to borrow. But doesn't obligate us to do that necessarily.
I always find it's helpful to hear from a few different people, so I'm going to have Lynn give the more technical answer of that.
Yes, actually, that's a really good question. But it's, yes, we ask for up to eighteen million, just because the market's kind of volatile right now. But we fully intend to come in under that amount. But it's kind of like when you go out to get a house, you might go to get pre-approved for a mortgage. So you might want to get pre-approved at a certain level, and, but you hope to obviously get a mortgage for much less. So that is what we're doing. But again, eighteen million is, we worked with our financial advisor, PFM, and then with Matt on the project scope of it, and we thought eighteen million was a good number.
Any other questions from council members? What is the pleasure of council in regard to the Notice of Intent Resolution for the Fire Station Bonds?
Motion of support, item twelve E four point one, Fire Station Bonds, Notice of Intent Resolution.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion from council members? Well, this is one of the first steps in this process. I think it's a very important step. I know that we've got plans that we continue to be working on, that we've worked on pretty diligently. Staff has been working with consultants, with members of our own fire department. I was actually at a pancake breakfast at the Graffs Cup Fire Station this weekend, and I took a completely different eye with me as I was walking through that fire station. More now, more about the design of them and what's necessary, and pointing out different parts of that fire station to my family members, who rolled their eyes at how excited I was to show them the decontamination area for the turnout gear. Public safety is one of the most important things that we do in the city. And I think it's very important that we make sure that our firefighters, our police department has the tools that they need to do the job well. And especially with our firefighters, they not only work here, they live here. They spend long periods of time here. It's important that we do this right for their safety and to make sure that they can do their jobs as best as possible. So appreciate staff's great work on this. Yeah, Mr. Bird? No, that's great, I was-
And I just wanted to add one thing to that as well. You know, we call them firefighters, but they're much more than that. They are medical assistants as well. That's something that a lot of people don't look at and that may be overlooked as well.
Yeah, great point, thank you.
A lot of medical calls. And I don't know what those numbers are, but I know each year those numbers increase, so.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council members, any discussion on the motion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item twelve E six point one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation, Sal Perez Youth Scholarship Fund, deduction employees, January one, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-two, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Cash receipts, reporting dates, May thirty through June twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, seventy-three dollars. Downtown Group, Winmore Island Gardens, Deborah Cray, fifty dollars, Pia Brown, twenty dollars, Leonard and Sharon Tobaka, two hundred and fifty dollars, Patricia E. Smetana, fifty dollars, Michael and Mary Ann Lee, two hundred and fifty dollars, John Grusko, five hundred dollars. Donation boxes totaling three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you, Kathy. What is council's pleasure in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve with appreciation.
Moved by Bird, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item twelve E six point two, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, dissolution of the Sustainability Committee. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things on this. One, you, I'm sure, have noticed that in your consent agenda this evening, you took action on what seemingly was a very similar or identical item. And just for an explanation for you or those that might be viewing, the reason that the cable TV is taking multiple steps of dissolving that committee is because that was done by ordinance. And we all know that doing something where we're changing or in ordinance requires multiple steps. This, however, was an action by resolution that first established the Sustainability Committee. Now, the question might be also, wow, like sustainability seems like a really good thing. What on earth are you doing where you're potentially dissolving this committee? And I think, and I've heard from many of you, I think we've even had this discussion as we've talked about the board committee and commission process, and we've had some discussions in study sessions about identifying some committees that maybe have outlived their usefulness in some ways. The Sustainability Committee is, I would not describe, has outlived its usefulness. I think the Sustainability Committee was so successful in their efforts that they achieved that basically sustainability is now integrated and operationalized within not only the city operations, but also the Board of Public Works operations. To the point that we have Dan Borsma, a full-time project manager that basically works really solely on sustainability issues. So over the last number of years, including with discussions with the Sustainability Committee, and then ultimately with you, really precedes this recommendation that we would actually dissolve this committee. And absolutely not that we think sustainability isn't a core part now of the mission of the city. We think it's such a core part of the mission of the city that we've integrated right into our operations. Good timing in that we just recently were recognized within the state by the Michigan Green Communities Committee as being one of only a handful of communities that have achieved gold status as basically being one of the leaders in these efforts. So I just thought it helpful to provide a little context of that and really view this from my perspective, at least, as being a job so well-done that we can celebrate the work that those that have worked on this committee over the years can celebrate.
Great, thank you. Seeing none, what is the pleasure of, what is the pleasure of council? Pleasure of council, pleasure of council in regard to the dissolution of the Sustainability Committee?
Will we adopt the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion?
If I could make just a couple of comments.
Certainly.
It's another one of those situations I seem to be finding myself in more frequently these days of, oh, I remember when that happened, or we did this. This has been another one. I recall when the Sustainability Commission, Committee was first founded and given its charter and its charge. It was my really great privilege to be in a room with some very large-thinking folks who were part of that. I think of a gentleman, Warren Stuck, who gave tremendous leadership to that group. Mr. Willie Don Trezenberg, just a number of folks who have been really warriors for the cause of sustainability and the awareness building of that in this community. That group was given the charge when we started thinking about our Community Energy Plan of sort of flushing all of that out. It was from their efforts that we were able to retain the services of a very good consulting agency who helped us ultimately craft what we've come to know as our Community Energy Plan. They went through all the work, created the draft, presented it to council. There was a few tweaks along the way, but it was out of the effort and a large part of those folks in that committee that we have what we have today. They have achieved probably what most committees should have as their goal, and that's to work themselves out of a job. Keith described it very well. We can do that now because the focus of what they were doing, what they tried to do, has been very well-integrated into the normal course of stuff that we do every day here. We have a framework to apply to everything that we consider, projects and contracts and everything, is to see if we're hitting the mark on the things that we want to do in terms of sustainability. So I just want to applaud, and I can't remember everybody that was involved, but applaud everyone who was a part of the Sustainability Group for so many years, for all of their effort and work. And we should be very proud of what we've achieved as a city as a result of that, so, thank you.
Great, well said, Dave. Any other comments, discussion from council members? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item is item twelve E six point three, Human Resources, Parks and Recreation, Full-Time Staffing Request. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. And good, I see them walking up, because I'm going to try not to do too much of an introduction on this. Because I think it's, this is a really important kind of follow-up recommendation that we're making to you, that I hope isn't greedy, because you were very kind in our budget presentation to add two full-time positions. But the way that played out, really, that Andy and Jen will describe to you momentarily here, really is why we're recommending and asking for approval to move forward with this very important staffing request that I think just helps make sure that as we continue to add to the amenities that we have in our fair city, that we're taking good, sustainable care of it, Dave. So Jen, Andy, take it away.
Want to do paper, rock, scissors?
No.
Okay.
You won.
So, yes, we were thrilled to have the two new full-time positions and went through a full hiring process, several interviews. We had a lot of really great candidates, internal and external, apply. And the two that rose to the top were two long-term, part-time employees. They seem like more than part-time employees because they work so many hours seasonally. You know, there's a lot more to do in the greenhouse and in the parks. And it's always exciting when we can promote from within and when we can, you know, show that we value the contributions that they've made as a part-time employee and bring them on and give them benefits and retirement and all that good stuff. So that left us with a new problem, and that is to find two new unicorns, I like to call them, long-term, part-time employees that are not benefited, that are willing to come in day after day and work so hard and add so much value to the department. It's going to be tough right now. We're, you know, we're having trouble finding part-time, seasonal, part-time, year-round staff. It's just the nature of the economy right now. So we were kind of, you know, scratching our heads, saying, well, we really want to offer the position to both of them, but this is actually going to put us in the negative for overall workforce. And so we had a discussion with Keith and, as a group, kind of thought this through and came to the conclusion that we'd like to also hire another full-time staff and not replace the two part-time staff members. So there was a cost sheet attached to the report, and you'll see it was a very minimal impact, just over thirteen thousand dollars to the budget. So it's not a huge impact. Sometimes when we add a new full-time position, you can see, you know, sixty-eight, seventy-five thousand dollars. So this is pretty minimal. But I think that it's worth it. You know, we've had some great external candidates as well that we're excited about. Anything you want to add, Andy?
No, yeah, we're just really excited about it, and to have you guys consider it would be great. Like Jen said, she covered it all. We couldn't be more happy with the two internals that we promoted. And we're very excited to have them on board, just to have more consistency and continuity throughout the year. And being able to hire this third person would absolutely help fill a gap that we've been feeling for a long time. Of course, it won't fill all the gaps, but it absolutely will help, and we're excited about it.
And, and this, and this, and this, and this new position you already have, you may look at the list of candidates you've already interviewed?
We still, yes, we do have a pool of candidates that we interviewed.
That's part of the work out of the way.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks for all the work you do.
Yep. Any other questions for staff members? Uh, looking for a motion, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the Parks and Recreation Full-Time Staffing Request?
Will we approve that request?
Move by Mr. Hookstra is their support? Support by Byrd, any discussion? I just have one comment to make, and I'm going to, I'm going to follow Mr. Hookstra's lead on this. When we talk to employers about tax abatements, we talk about living wage and making sure that we are, that, that folks are being compensated well. And I think that it, it speaks well of the city that we're, we're working to do that same thing for the great folks that work for us here. Uh, we want to make sure that they feel supported, that they feel valued, that they are compensated appropriately for the work that they do and the dedication that they have to the city. And, um, and I think that that thirteen thousand dollars to make sure that we've got somebody who has, uh, benefits and has, uh, the feeling that they have full belonging here in the city is a, is a great investment. So, thank you for that. Any other comments, discussion from council members? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great. Thank you. Uh, item number thirteen, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you for that and as just being kind of a symbol of ongoing support that you have for our team here at the city. Um, so, it is appreciated, um, by me, but more importantly, by all of our employees. So, thank you. Um, I shared with some of you earlier, and, um, there was a press release that went out, uh, late this afternoon. Um, I won't speak, um, in addition to that press release, but just very happy to, um, announce, um, in light of a extremely sad situation that we were able to, um, in partnership with the Allegan County Prosecutor, announce that charges, um, have been, um, authorized, um, on open murder and other charges for, uh, the very sad murder that happened several weeks ago, um, in the thirty-ninth and Lincoln Avenue area. Um, terrible with those types of events happen in our community or any community. Um, but also think it speaks highly, and we always want to be one of those communities with, where when that happens, we're able to identify, work through the justice system and bring justice, um, to victims and families when those types of things happen. So, um, we look forward to not just these charges, but following through on the appreh- apprehension and eventual, hopefully conviction, um, in this matter. Um, thanks also to the community. I know that, uh, Fourth of July time quite often can be, um, loud, and some people love it and some people hate it. And, you know, I think I'm just reminded often of the positions that all of us are in, you all included, that local government in so many ways is just that place to mitigate between people that have different opinions on different things. And that's okay. Um, but having, you know, a process and, um, hopefully having safe events and ultimately culminating in, at least we were part of some of the loud bangs, um, with the larger Mac community and having a great Fourth of July celebration, um, on Monday night, even in spite of a little bit of rain. I know that many people commented, we had a lot of people viewing online. And I guess if you viewed online, you didn't have to hear the booms yourself directly because there wasn't sound with that. Um, and even for people to know, it's not like we put a camera out there just for the Fourth of July fireworks. We make use of one of the many cameras that we have out there in the community that just happens to do a pretty good job of, of capturing those fireworks. Um, there were many references to this, um, earlier, but we were very pleased. Again, the McAtaw Area, Area Coordinating Council hosted the MDOT Director, and I just had his name pulled up, Paul Ajigba. And really nice visit by him and staff in the larger region, um, talking through various issues. But really, it was more so just a meet and greet. And I was reflecting on that later where we've had, um, the great opportunity to not only have the MDOT Director, but we actually hosted the MEDC Director here, um, a couple of different times over the last year also. Um, not just connected with the LG Expansion Project, but with other economic development projects. And very much a theme that was communicated today is the growth of the West Michigan region. And we, we kind of push the fact that the West Michigan region is kind of being driven by the Ottawa County, Allegan County region. And maybe we like to break some, some, a little bit and say that City of Holland is right in the middle of that region. So, a lot of things going on, and it creates, um, some growth, and it creates some pressure, and it even creates, right about now, it seems like it's a little bit hard to get anywhere with all the construction projects going on. Um, and yet, that's definitely some short-term pain for some long-term, um, necessary improvements. So, uh, we were very pleased to ho- host the MDOT Director and their staff and thank them for that. And then finally, all of you have information at your places. Um, thankful for a, um, warm, warm response in doing a community exchange with the Luddington. We had a public speaker earlier that talked about kind of perspectives from other community, communities, and that's why I think for all of you to participate in that community change this year with Luddington, um, is helpful in many ways. So, um, if you have any questions, um, be sure to shoot that back to either Synch or myself, but hopefully you should be all set and you have more specific information provided to you. And that's all of that I have this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Uh, yeah, for those of us who are going to Luddington, I did an advanced trip, uh, last week. Uh, we've got a lot of great things to see. I'm sure they have a lot of things they want to show us. Uh, had a wonderful time there a week or so ago. Um, this has been a, a, a busy month, busy month of festivals. I was, uh, honored to participate in the Pride Festival, did a welcome, uh, at their variety show. Uh, well-attended events on Saturday. I was not able to attend on Saturday because I was out of town. And then, uh, immediately following the, the, uh, the Pride event on Friday night, I had the opportunity to visit, uh, the New Celtic Festival here in the City of Holland, uh, which is my understanding from what I saw Friday night was a rousing success. And what I understand from Saturday was even more rousing success. Uh, ticket sales beyond expectation. Everyone seemed to be having an absolutely wonderful time, and I think that that's going to become a very, very welcome tradition in this community. Uh, well-attended, look, great entertainment, great folks. Uh, I was even convinced to start looking at ordering a kilt, so. And there is, for those of you, other you of council who are interested, yes, there is a Dutch tartan that is available for a kilt. So, uh, I have links to that if you're, if you're interested. Uh, and then there is a, another event that's going to be taking place this weekend in this, this time of festivals is, uh, is going to be the Laup Fiesta that's going to be taking place this weekend. Uh, and I have a resolution in regard to that. Uh, whereas, the City of Holland is home to the second-largest Hispanic population in the state with our Hispanic and Latino brothers and sisters, friends, neighbors and coworkers currently making up nearly twenty-two point three percent of our local community. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate the rich diversity within this community that includes ancestry from Mexico, Central American, South America and Spain. And whereas, the rich tradition of the Hispanic community centered around the tenants of family, faith and resilience have built opportunity for their children. And whereas, we acknowledge their contribution to the local economy through their years of residence in Holland and celebrate the human capital that resides within the next generations to continue their contribution to the economic prosperity and culture of our area. And whereas, the Hispanic culture permeates every aspect of our communal life from economic and professional contributions to our dinner tables. And whereas, Latin Americans United for Progress became an organization in nineteen seventy-four devoted to address the needs of the community through advocacy, education and celebration of Hispanic culture, it continues today with the same mission. And whereas, the mission to empower Latinos to create a better community for all through advocacy, celebration and education, Laup has been a driving force for change in the Holland community since nineteen seventy-four. And whereas, the annual Laup Fiesta is a time to celebrate the growth of our community and its capacity of inclusion of all in Holland. And whereas, we celebrate Laup's annual Fiesta Celebration that will bring informational resources, employment opportunities to the community, Latino-owned artisans, food vendors and live Latino entertainment. Now, therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council invite the community to join the city's Latin Americans United for Progress Hispanic Heritage Celebration known as the Laup Fiesta on July ninth, twenty twenty-two at the Holland Civic Center, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, the sixth day of July, twenty twenty-two. Mayor Nathan Box. So, I invite, uh, the community to come, council members to come. Uh, I will be there at noon at the Civic Center today, the, coming up on Saturday. Uh, promises to be a great afternoon and evening of events. And that is all that I have today. Uh, appointments, motions and communications from council members. Mr. Corbin, I believe you have something?
Yes, Your Honor. It's, uh, recommended that City Council appoint Matthew Davis, Devon Shay, Mark Vai Soluski, Vai Saki, and reappoint Bradley Fuzik and Dan Sorak to the Board of Appeals.
Uh, so, recommendation, is there a, uh, motion in regard to that recommendation?
Will we approve?
Move by Hookstra is their support?
Su-
Support by Aaron Sors, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Corbin? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great. Thank you. Any other communications from council members? Mr. Byrd?
Yes, um, take a drink. Keith made mention of, uh, incident that happened, uh, in Holland on June nineteenth of the murder of, uh, another black person in Holland. Um, I wanted to talk about that briefly for a second. I spoke about this, um, after the June one murder when, uh, another young black man was killed in Holland. And the premises of my words during that time was the black-on-black crime. Um, in my opinion, this has become an epidemic in the United States. We have, um, I'll just, again, I like data, right? Um, I do that for a living. So, Chicago, this is all this weekend over the Fourth of July. Seventy-one shots fired in Chicago, sixty-two people wounded, eight people dead. New York, over fifty bullets shot, over thirty, or thirty people wounded, six people dead. Saginaw, my hometown, three people wounded, two people dead. Grand Rapids, one person dead. Um, you know, this is, this is something that I don't think gets enough publicity. We hear about all these other social issues and I'm not taking anything away from them, but at the end of the day, when you start adding up the number of deaths compared to this issue that we have with black males killing other black males, it pales in comparison. There is no comparison at all. We're talking about watermelons to grapes. And, you know, I, I, I think there are things that can be done. You know, I look at, for instance, the, the gun debate. You know, there's a lot of debate on the guns. But to me, that, it goes so much further than get the guns off the streets. Um, there's a lot I want to say about that, but I, I'll, I'll keep that. I, I won't, I won't speak. But there, there, we have come together in the States for so many different things. If you agree with it or disagree, we've had, uh, COVID. People rallied for COVID. We've had people rally for, uh, Ukraine. We've had people rally for Black Lives Matter. And people took a stand, people made their voices heard. And I also believe that there was some change and things happened because of that. But there's no outcry for black men killing black men. Or I should rephrase that to say, a lot of black young boys killing each other and then some black men killing each other, which in this case in Holland, we've had both. We've had a young nineteen-year-old boy who was murdered, and then we had a thirty-six-year-old man, I believe thirty-six or thirty-nine, don't recall, who both lost their life. That mom will never kiss her son. And the wife and the kids of the thirty-nine-year-old will never get a hug or a kiss from their father ever again. Those are weighty things that we can never replace. The shockwaves of those things, we have no idea how that touches families that, that deal with that. Um, it's, it's a very sobering thing. I would ask that people would look into it. Don't just, I, I'm giving, I, I'm barely scratching the surface on this by speaking about it, but look into it, look and see. What I'm talking about is a legitimate thing. It's, you, some, some people don't want to talk about it. Some people thinks it's a bunch of, uh, BS. But I challenge you to take your time and your resources and your effort away from some of these other things and focus on this. They're killing each other. They're damn dying. Like, there is no more after that. And like I said, I've had three members in the last six years, twenty, seventeen and fourteen years, years old, who we had to bury because another black young man killed them. That's unacceptable in my eyes, and I, and now I see it happening in Holland, um, a place I call home. And it's very frustrating for me to see all this happening and to see no one in our society really give a damn. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Quincy. Any other communications from council members? Seeing none, there's just one more motion that I would entertain at this time. Move by Corbin, support by Aaron Sors. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Waiting for Jay.